Sixteen twenty twenty, suspending Hawaii revised statutes, chapter ninety-two, public agency meetings and records to the extent necessary to enable boards as defined in section ninety-two dash two, to conduct meetings without any board members or members of the public physically present in the same location, among other things. The Board of Education will be holding virtual meetings until further notice. The public can still call in or log on to listen to board meetings live. The live broadcast is audio only for both board members and the public. Video of the board members and any presenters will not be broadcast. An image of the agenda will be shared on the screen. This is to reduce the amount of bandwidth that this meeting takes up and to preserve the quality of the audio. Board members, a couple of housekeeping reminders regarding raising your hands in WebEx whenever you want to participate in the discussion and wait till you are called on before speaking. Be sure you are muted when you are not speaking and unmute yourself when you're called on. Be sure to state your name and when you participate so members of the public know which board member is speaking. Put your hands down after you have concluded your speaking. And if you lose connection, contact board staff immediately. With that, this meeting is called to order at eleven oh two A M. We only have one item on our special meeting agenda, and it is action on Superintendent Kishimoto's discontinuance of extra compensation for classroom teachers in special education, hard-to-staff geographical location, and Hawaiian immersion programs. My memorandum describing my recommendation is included in the meeting materials. I know that it was quite extensive, but I hope that you read it thoroughly. Before we start discussing this agenda item, we will take public testimony. Members of the public who signed up to testify must be logged in on WebEx using the same name you used to sign up for testimony. Board staff will call on you in the order in which you signed up to present oral testimony. Board staff will unmute you or mic. Please test your speakers and microphone before your name is called to ensure that they are working. Instructions on how to do so can be found on the board's website. If you are not audible because of technical issues, you will be muted and the next testifier will be called upon. If you're able to resolve your technical issues, you will have the opportunity to testify at the end of the meeting. Note that the board has modified its procedures and is allowing testifiers to sign up for oral testimony until the meeting is adjourned, so people can still sign up during the meeting. We have a number of testifiers and I want to make sure that we have time to discuss this item among the board members. So I will limit the testimony to two minutes. Please state your name, your organization if applicable, and a chime will sound when you have thirty seconds left. And a second chime when your testimony time expires, you will be automatically muted once your allotted time for testimony expires. So board staff, if you could begin the testimony, please.
Julie Reese Oda, followed by Ty Baird. Julie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mahalo, please proceed.
My name is Julie Reyes Oda. I'm a math teacher at Nanakuli High and Intermediate School and a public school mom. I'm commenting on the discontinuance of differentials. I work on the Y-Ni coast at what the department would call a hard-to-staff school. I'm married to a sped teacher. We are two people contributing to data points on page two of Superintendent Kishimoto's memo. I know there'll be a lot of people commenting on this action item, so I just want to hit on two topics from this memorandum. The first is cutting differentials for teachers, yet silent on cutting differentials from the seven HGA bargaining unit thirteen and four excluding bargaining thirty-five positions, which many would not have caught if Chairperson Payne had not pointed it out. Ask yourself, are those the words of a person who genuinely believes in making sure cuts stay away from the classroom? Why are teachers invisible when it comes to discussions centered around schools or school improvement? Who do you think is writing the budget requests? It's not teachers. Why do you think teachers keep getting the short end of the stick? Because we have no representation. The second topic I want to point out from the memorandum is the inaccuracy or misrepresentation of facts. Chairperson Payne starts the discussion by highlighting the new term of pilot being used by the department, but that's not how it was presented to the board. The department presented differentials of plans and contingency plans to continue funding in the future. This is not the first time the superintendent or the department has misrepresented facts, and I doubt it'll be the last. Chairperson Payne, thank you for your recommendation to refrain from taking further action. Thank you for your due diligence in questioning the superintendent as you did in your memorandum. No board should be a rubber stamp for any government official. In this case, the kids, the parents, the employees, we all depend on you guys to speak for us, to question for us. And as teachers, we don't get the opportunity to backenter back and forth at the department and board at these meetings, and I would consider that a missed opportunity. We make up almost sixty percent of the employees of the DOE. So before I conclude, I want to make one more ask. It's February eighteenth. The superintendent's contract is up on July thirty-first. The discussion on the continuation or cancellation of our contract has not come up. Can we please have an update on this soon? Thank you.
Ty Baird, followed by Rebecca Hadley Schlosser. Ty, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Aloha, my name is Ty Baird, and I am testifying on the superintendent's discontinuance of extra compensation for classroom teachers in special education, hard-to-staff, and Hawaiian language programs. I am currently a special education teacher at Kahului Elementary School on the island of Maui. I left my general education position not only because there was a critical need for special education teachers, but because I felt that it was the first time the state finally began to understand our value and understand the important and critical role we serve with extra compensation. The additional pay has allowed me to be able to continue to live in Hawaii, more specifically on Maui, while also providing above-standard materials for my students during instruction. Data shows these salary boosts have made huge impacts addressing our shortage crisis. I believe our special education teachers, hard-to-staff teachers, and Hawaiian language teachers deserve every cent of every dollar that comes from the differential. Not only is teaching hard, but even more challenging when you must do so with even less resources at both our, as both our programs do. I want to remind everyone that these differentials have been part of our solution. They were intended to draw teachers in critical areas where our most vulnerable population needs them. These differentials made a remarkable impact in keeping our teachers and continuing to recruit for positions not usually sought after. Eliminating these differentials is not the answer. Please continue to find ways to fund them. It is very, very important for our keiki. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for rooting for us.
Rebecca Hadley Schlosser. Susan Piccola Davis. Rebecca, can you hear me? Rebecca. Rebecca is not present. Susan Piccola Davis. Susan, can you hear me?
I can.
Mahalo.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please proceed.
What a tough year it has been. I've read the testimonies online. I understand where everybody's coming from. I understand where the Department of Education now is stuck in between a rock and a hard place. I've listened to many testimonies also during the legislature, legislature and the sessions on education. And, you know, maybe everybody thinks it's the education's budget that we're trying to steer different solutions to try and be able to get this money to stretch. And maybe this isn't the best place to be trying to stretch money. But when you come down to the end of this, it's the governor that has caused the ten percent deductions, and then we got the two point five, which really didn't even stretch the money enough. I think the department and the state of Hawaii needs to understand that education is one of the most important things in the state. It's up to the legislature to think very hardly on what they're doing for our state and our education, because it just seems like they don't care. There, they have the money, they have the pockets. They need to provide more money towards our education so that we're not trying to pull money out of our hats from different pots that just isn't going to please anybody. Thank you for your time.
Corey Rosenly, followed by Wilbert Hulk. Corey Rosenly, President, HSTA. Corey, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Aloha Chair Payne and board members. HSTA strongly supports the Board of Education's recommendation to direct Superintendent Christina Kishimoto to rescind her February ninth, two thousand twenty-one memorandum and to refrain from taking action on any teacher-paid differentials without prior board approval. Furthermore, HSTA would ask that the BOE to maintain the differentials, since the differentials have shown remarkable success after only being in place for little over a year. HSTA fully recognizes the very difficult economic situation that the state is in, but we are hopeful that President Biden's one point nine trillion dollar American Rescue Plan will pass Congress soon. That will contain about four hundred fifty million dollars potentially for Hawaii's K through twelve schools. And the stimulus bill would also have three hundred fifty billion dollars for state and local governments. The differentials are working. The DOE was able to recruit two hundred forty-nine teachers in just the first year alone, reducing the overall teacher shortage in one year by twenty-five percent. The Board of Education owes it to the teachers who have moved into differential positions during the last two years based on a promise, and that promise should be honored. For Hawaiian immersion, the board already has policy one oh five eight that says that Hawaiian immersion teachers should be appropriately compensated for the additional qualifications. For special education, in the first year alone, it has reduced the vacancy rate of special educations by sixty-six percent. It has been the lowest rates we have seen, and we have seen for the college that they are turning down students. For hard-to-staff, we believe it is a civil rights issue because native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander children for years have been denied equal access to qualified teachers. And this has made a huge impact already of trying to put teachers into hard-to-staff areas. There's no guarantee that if we stop the differentials, they will ever be restored.
Wilbert Hulk, followed by Kylie Sanchez. Wilbert Hulk, Executive Director, HSTA. Wilbert, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good morning Chair Payne and members of the board. My name is Wilbert Hulk, and I am the Executive Director of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. Let me begin by saying, this issue is not about the superintendent's attempt to unilaterally discontinue shortage differentials. This is about whether you, as board members, are going to allow her to make this decision, a decision she clearly does not have the authority to make without your approval. On December fifth, two thousand nineteen, the board voted to allow Superintendent Kishimoto to move forward with paying shortage differentials. In doing so, the board made a commitment to the teachers of this state that differentials would be paid to those who qualified for them. This was not an easy decision. I will note that there were board members who were concerned about whether the legislature would fund the differentials. Board member Te Keno cautioned the board about moving forward with the differentials because there was no guarantee the legislature would fund them. He pointedly asked the superintendent what would happen if the legislature did not fund the differentials going forward and was given a guarantee by her that the DOE would absorb the costs from its own budget. I'm sure many of you have the same concern, but we're put at ease with the superintendent's guarantee of funding. Please continue to stand by the commitment you made to the teachers of this state, to me and to many teachers. A commitment is no different than a promise. I urge you to direct the superintendent to find the funding for the differentials as she guaranteed the board she would. Thank you.
Kylie Sanchez, followed by Davilin Lokelani Han. Kylie, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kylie Sanchez, and I have been teaching at Y-Ni Intermediate for the last seven years. I strongly oppose the discontinuation of differentials. Morale in teaching is plummeting, and teachers do not trust the superintendent to do what's best for them, much less the students. As student representative Hunter just said, our teachers need to be available, but these major cuts will force them out of the classroom, and our underserved communities will be the first to the chopping block. By ripping away these differentials promised, we've been deceived and are going against our own Board Chair Payne's recommendation to invest in our kids, as she said in her talk story video with the superintendent last week. If our own board chair is willing to invest, that should be a clue as to what is the right thing to do. The superintendent shouldn't be able to steal millions to spend on tutors while regular classes are vacated by actual professionals who will be replaced by untrained subs. If the goal is just to hire the cheapest labor, make the cuts, refuse to pay us, fill the classes with emergency hires, and what will that do to our students? You shouldn't, you wouldn't even send your own child to a school where teachers aren't teachers and have no license or expertise, so why are you forcing the underserved communities into this inevitable reality? We are already struggling with vacancies and shortages of highly qualified teachers willing to work for peanuts. Please don't allow the superintendent to make this worse by unilaterally making this decision, which will have a catastrophic effect. Not only will we lose the eight thousand dollar differential in Y-Ni, but if the governor cuts nine percent of our pay, levered teachers will lose around fifteen thousand dollars a year, not including the other things they're trying to take away from our contract, like raises and rising healthcare costs. Over four years, that's sixty thousand dollars, and we are not buy three years, get one free educators. Don't treat us like worker bees and treat us like professionals for the sake of our kids. Most teachers are literally teaching right now, so don't even have the chance to actually speak out today. Most of us also have higher ed degrees and can find somewhere else to work, but the kids are stuck with what you decide for them. It is a shame and an embarrassment to be a teacher right now, to literally have to beg for our dignity and respect. Why do we have to convince you that our...
Davilin Lokelani Han, followed by Osa Tui. Davilin Lokelani Han, Kulakayo Puni, or Koalapuu. Davilin, can you hear me? Davilin is not present. Osa Tui. Osa Tui, Vice President, HSTA. Osa, can you hear me?
Aloha Kakahiaka Dina.
Aloha, Osa. Please proceed.
This is the testimony of Eric Seitz, who had a prior commitment. As many of you know, I've been an advocate for children with disabilities and their families for over thirty years. I first represented Jennifer Felix in nineteen eighty-nine and served as one of the lead counsel in class litigation for which Jennifer was named the plaintiff. As counsel, I oversaw the implementation of consent decree for approximately ten years that brought millions of dollars into programs for children's mental health and special education and dramatically improved opportunities for disabled children in Hawaii. I was disappointed in dismayed when the Felix Consent Decree terminated and the state gradually began to retreat from its commitments to provide sufficient and qualified services, placements, and programs for thousands of eligible children and their families. Prior to the Felix litigation, fewer than half of the special education teachers in Hawaii were certified and/or had any specialized training and experience to work with disabled children. By the time the consent decree ended, well over ninety percent of the teachers working in special education positions were certified and/or engaging in training programs that would enable them to become certified. As those numbers began to drop, it certainly was encouraging that the Department of Education implemented a program to provide increased pay for special education teachers that would and did attract more and more qualified applicants into the field. Now, despite the success of those pay inducements, the superintendent is proposing to cut them altogether, which would again diminish the quality of the special education experience for Hawaii children and jeopardize the hard-fought gains for improvements that have been achieved over the past thirty-plus years. Going back is not a reasonable option. Denying disabled children the quality of services to which they are entitled under existing state and federal laws will cause enormous harm and lead to great hardship for those children and their families who are suffering disproportionately under the current pandemic conditions. I truly hope that the Board of Education will not abandon its commitments and will reject the superintendent's cold and calculating effort to dilute the quality of special education and effectively prevent many children from benefiting from their public education. Mahalo.
Uluhani Waialae Ale, followed by Lena Ala Vedder. Uluhani Waialae Ale, Kulakayo Puni, or Koalapuu. Uluhani, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please proceed.
Velina Kialoha Eka Papa Ho'ona'au au o hawai'i. O va'una o uluhani Waialae Ale, no ka'aina vehi vehi o mulukai nuia hina. Ekumu va'ua maki kulakayo puni o koalapuu, a'a'au vai kapapa ekahi. I am testifying today in support of continuing the extra compensation for classroom teachers and special education, hard-to-staff geographical locations, and Hawaiian language programs. As a Hawaiian language immersion teacher living in a hard-to-staff geographical location, I have witnessed the many challenges and struggles of teacher shortages here on our own island. On Mulukai, we have one Hawaiian language immersion program, and still it has been very difficult to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers for our students. We've taught many years of having combination classes with classroom sizes going up to thirty-one students. Teaching in a Hawaiian language immersion program can require double or even triple the workload of your average teacher in a regular English classroom. We spend countless hours, days, nights, and weekends translating curriculum, books, resources, and prepping many other resources that are not always readily available in Hawaiian language. The amount of time, work, and energy we put can be tiring, overwhelming, burdensome, but we do this because of our aloha commitment and passion to perpetuate our mother tongue here in Hawaii. Eola ka'ula aloha vai'i. The work is hard and the days are long, but we love what we do, and we will continue to do it, to do whatever it takes to provide quality instruction and education for our keiki. Mulukai has one of the highest costs of living in the state, and we pay double, triple, sometimes even more for the price of goods and services, such as almost five dollars for gas or twelve dollars for milk. That can use, that can be a huge hole in our pocket, and the struggle is very real for many families. Our stores have raised the prices because of the rising cost of shipment and barge, and ending this extra compensation would be devastating. So mahalo.
Lena Ala Vedder, followed by Amanda Lekar. Lena Ala Vedder, Kulakayo Puni, or Maui. Lena Ala, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Aloha Chairperson Catherine Payne and board members. I am Lena Ala Kulaloyo Vedder, a Hawaiian immersion teacher for twenty-three years on Maui, and I am against Superintendent Kishimoto's February ninth, two thousand twenty-one memorandum regarding the discontinuance of extra compensation for classroom teachers and special education, hard-to-staff geographical locations, and Hawaiian language programs. This would mean that my salary will decrease by six hundred sixty-seven dollars a month. On top of that, a proposed ten percent decrease in pay will result in an additional six hundred sixty dollars a month, resulting in a decreasing total of one thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars a month of my hard-earned dollars. This will have a devastating effect on the livelihood of my family of four. I also inherited my father's estate last year, and I'm financially obligated. I will have to apply for a part-time job on the weekends or after school just to make ends meet. At my age, I come home afterward exhausted and bewildered at expectations that are imposed on me. The demands of distance learning compiled with translating, producing slideshow presentations, correcting work on different digital platforms, and creating interactive technology for my Hawaiian immersion students keep me up at night. It's like I'm a new teacher all over again. I've been teaching in my classroom since the first day of school and haven't called in sick or chose to do teleworking. I am committed to my profession, my students, and my lahu'i as a kumu ka'ia puni. I deserve the pay differential. I ask this board to support Chairperson Payne's recommendation and direct Superintendent Kishimoto to rescind her February ninth, two thousand twenty-one memorandum and to refrain from taking action on any teacher-paid differentials without prior board approval. Mahalo.
Amanda Lekar, followed by Eo Mai Lani Kukahiko. Amanda, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Amanda Lekar, and I've been a special education teacher in the state of Hawaii since August two thousand eleven. And I'm proud to be a special education teacher. And I have been so lucky in all the positions that I have been, that we have either had a long-term substitute teacher or emergency hire in our vacant special education positions. But I know so many across the state were not so lucky. On December fifth, two thousand nineteen, the Department of Education posted the memo, "Board Action on Extra Compensation for Classroom Teachers in Special Education, Hard-to-Staff Geographical Locations, and Hawaiian Language Immersion Programs." I do hope that the Department of Education provides the Board of Education the TATP numbers of the postings and how many teachers applied for the special education positions for the hard-to-staff locations in the Hawaiian immersion programs to see if this actually did work, because with my limited knowledge, I heard that it did work. We had more teachers in the special education classrooms wanting to go back because of this differential. I would like to quote the superintendent from around December third, two thousand nineteen, where she quoted, "We have a shortage in our state, and we must take bold action to recognize Hawaii's exceptional public education system. Inaction is not an option. This is an equality, equity issue." Please keep the superintendent's words, what she stated, "Inaction is not an option," so that we can continue ensuring that we have qualified teachers in the hard-to-staff areas, our Hawaiian language immersion programs, and our special education classrooms. Everything we do is for the students, and we should continue doing that. Mahalo for your time.
Eo Mai Lani Kukahiko, followed by Kahera Faria. Eo Mai Lani Kukahiko, University of Hawaii Manoa. Eo Mai Lani, can you hear me?
Aloha, I can hear you.
Please proceed.
Okay, mahalo. I just wanted to echo the voices of the ka'ia puni teachers that I've already heard present today. As you may know, I think ka'ia puni is one of the most needed areas throughout the state. A little bit different than special aid, special ed, excuse me. But I work at the Manoa University to prepare teachers specifically for immersion. And we just can't get enough, even with the, with the communities just showing more and more want in language immersion for their families and communities. I really think that it would be a terrible move to get rid of these differentials, because this is actually board policy. And I also think that, you know, unlike other areas that you can recruit from the mainland or whatnot, this is not an area where we were able to recruit from anywhere else as seen by the Hawaiian permit that's allowing high school graduates to go directly in the classroom in front of our ka'ia puni students. So please, please support the differentials for ka'ia puni teachers and into the future. Mahalo.
Kahera Faria, followed by Ke'oka Pukoa, ka'ohe lauli'i. Kahera, can you hear me?
Aloha, yes.
Please proceed.
Mahalenui. Aloha mai eka papa ho'ona'au au. Recently, my colleague and I presented on a topic, motivation for self-determination. Some of the things that we found, that we looked at, were motivators for pre-service and in-service teachers. We found that one of the motivators were the involvement of Ohana or Makua, parent groups. I'm here as a Makua or a parent of a student in Hawaiian language immersion setting in support of the continuance of the extra compensation for our kumus. Another factor that we found was a sense of belonging. Teachers create safe, safe learning environments for our children before strong bonds with colleagues, students, and their families and the community, which is here. Another factor that we found is building competence. As someone who works in teacher preparation, we are seeing Hawaiian language immersion graduates returning to teach in Hawaiian education settings. I highly recommend that we do our part to help address the teacher shortages in Hawaii, in Hawaiian education, but continue with the pay differential or extra compensation. The last motivating factor that I want to mention here is that of kuleana. Kuleana for our children, to curriculum, to each of their schools, and their communities, which is Hawaii. Teachers are responsible... Teachers are responsible for the education of our children in Hawaiian language history and culture, addressing the state's constitutional duty. Our Hawaiian language immersion teachers deserve the pay differential and more, as they are a small number of teachers who are able to address Article Ten, Section Four of the Hawaii State Constitution. My duty and responsibility as a parent is to support my children's teachers.
Ke'okapuko'a ka'ohe lauli'i, followed by Keoki Faria. Ke'okapuko'a ka'ohe lauli'i, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, if you could speak up just a little louder.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, mai kai, please proceed.
Aloha mai no'au ka'au. I am Ke'okapuko'a ka'ohe lauli'i, and I'd like to thank the Chair and members of the DOE and our state superintendent for supporting the differential pay in twenty nineteen for our special education teachers, teachers in hard-to-staffed areas, and the teachers who raised me to be confident and independent by many kumu in Hawaiian language and Hawaiian language immersion education. I am here here again in twenty-twenty-one to stand in strong support of the special in the support of the special education, hard-to-staff, and Hawaiian language immersion teacher pay. I'd like to remind everyone that we, students, have wonderful teachers who are educating us about our duties and responsibilities as individuals and as a collective whole, and teaching us to be responsible to one another and to the world around us. In the middle of the pandemic for me, school is as normal as it can be. I feel safe from learning from home, and I thank my teachers and school principals for making this happen for us kids. I'm able to see my classmates that I've never met in person, and my teachers who have managed to keep me engaged and take up most of my daily classes, discussions, and endless assignments. My teachers have brought some sense of normalcy in my daily schedule. There's something to do with due date besides charge. I'd like to remind everyone that we, every single one of us, all of us at one time had a teacher. We will not be where we are now without our teachers. We must place a higher value on our teachers in order to continue to affect positive changes for our future. Mahalo.
Keoki Faria, followed by Laverne Moore. Keoki, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Keoki?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Aloha mai eka papa ho'ona'au. I'm speaking to you today in support of continuing the extra compensation for Hawaiian language immersion teachers. It is my strong belief that all Hawaii DOE teachers' salaries should be increased immediately to acknowledge the importance of their work. There's a major disconnect between what teachers do for our communities, families, and children, and public perception sometimes. They are not merely babysitters, but educators who develop the knowledge and skills in our children that maintain our society, as well as a common consciousness amongst us that moves us ever closer to a just, equitable society. Hawaiian language immersion teachers are particularly deserving of salary increase in addition to a pay differential for all that is expected of them. Nearly every teacher is the second language learner of Hawaiian. And in addition, being up to date on their content, Hawaiian language immersion teachers also need to continuously work towards improving their basic proficiency in the language. There is also a constant need to create curriculum, or in some cases, edit existing curriculum to address educational standards by ensuring that the learning is culturally relevant and appropriate. Despite the hard-working efforts to this point, Hawaiian education continues to lack a basic K to twelve curriculum that achieves language and cultural competencies while also addressing Hawaii DOE educational outcomes. This is understandable due to the systemic policies and norms that have removed Hawaiian language, culture, and history over one hundred years in schools and communities. Finally, if Hawaii is truly to achieve equity and excellence in our schools, it must begin with a constitutional commitment to Hawaiian language, culture, and history, and the full support of our Hawaiian language immersion program as a means to that end. For Hawaii will never respect diversity if it fails to prioritize its initial commitment to the Aboriginal people, language, and culture of this land, Hawaii. Mahalenui.
Laverne Moore, HSTA, followed by Deborah Anderson, Waikia Intermediate School, Brett McCardle, Kialakehe Elementary, Susan Rocco, Special Education Advisory Council, Loke'elani Han, kulakayapuni o kualapu'u. Laverne Moore, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Laverne, please proceed.
Okay, I am a special education teacher at McKinney High School. I speak in opposition of Superintendent Kishimoto's discontinuing of extra compensation for classroom teachers. Online teaching has been the most challenging in my fifty-one years of teaching. Add to it Fed state and federal mandates, procedures, paperwork, training, and retraining, reevaluations, eligibility, and IEP meetings makes one ask, why am I still teaching? Why? As a social activist, I love teaching history and working with special education students. The ten thousand dollar special education differentials adds to my high three, and it's an incentive to continue teaching. Mentoring and supporting incoming special education teachers is a way of giving back to my profession and the HSTA for all of the training and leadership skills I have acquired throughout my career. My peers need the differentials because they are starting out in their careers, have college loans, living paycheck to paycheck, working two or more jobs after school or on the weekends. Continuing the differentials is the needed benefit for the service teachers render on behalf of our teachers in Hawaii's public school. Urges the Board of Education to direct the superintendent to rescind her memo ending teacher shortage differential. Thank you.
Deborah Anderson, Waikia Intermediate School, followed by Brett McCardle, Kialakehe Elementary, Susan Rocco, Special Education Advisory, Loke'elani Han, kulakayapuni o kualapu'u. Deborah Anderson, Waikia Intermediate School, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mahalo, please proceed.
I am a retirement-eligible librarian, began in the nineteen eighties in special education. My master's degree specialized in learning disabilities, but I have linguistics and also I'm highly qualified in geography. I support all three differentials, geography and Hawaiian immersion, but I am speaking about special needs underfunding perennially. When we participated in the special education task force, we were anticipating it would improve our working conditions, and what we have seen is staffing cuts and higher workloads, which means less direct service to students. Now we've had a new change of the special education per pupil allocation, SPPA, so that Program ID one seven one three one is suffering further. When we say we want students in the least restricted environment appropriate to them in the IEP meeting, the fact that we've been pushing for inclusion does not justify that we're facing more than almost ten percent of cuts for special education program, almost twenty-five million. We have a brand-new burden as of two thousand and seventeen in the Supreme Court's ruling in Andrew that we have to provide substantive educational benefit. Disability can happen at any time to any one of us. Postpartum, I suffered hypoxic encephalopathy. My cognitive reserve was an IQ of one hundred and eighty-five. For the last fifteen years, I have had growth, regrowth through rehab, and it has given me more tools to assist others with brain injury. I am a disability rights activist. We know this has been effective in reducing vacancies by sixty-six percent. We know that it has improved the pipeline of well-educated special education teachers with a waitlist at Leeward Community College. Superintendent Kishimoto, you have choices provided both by your.
Brett McCardle, Kialakehe Elementary, Susan Rocco, CAC, Loke'elani Han, kulakayapuni o kualapu'u. Brett McCardle, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Brett. Mahalo, please proceed.
My name is Brett McCardle. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me while I try to make it through this. So far, I have been in the islands about six years. I moved here. I've taught special education in fifth grade for three years. One of those years, I did get to inherit the caseload of another special ed teacher that did leave because they couldn't afford to stay here. I am also currently working on a kindergarten team, nine of which are people that moved to the state to help fill the positions created because of shortages. And we are all currently benefiting from the geography differential, and I am benefiting from the special education one. I have lived here the entire time that I have lived here and before, the entire time before differentials, I have had to work two jobs to make ends meet. I live in Kona on Big Island. It's kind of an expensive place to try to live. So I've been trying to make it as a special education teacher and work both days on the weekends to be able to continue to work here and continue to work with the kids. The money that I did make before the differentials allowed me the opportunity to live with four other people because that's pretty much all I could afford with the money that I was making at that point. I'm almost forty, and if you're forty, you don't really want to live in that communal-type housing. The differentials did allow me to finally support myself as an educator and be able to value myself as an educator. They allowed me to quit that job and be able to focus on this career, the career of educating students and making a big difference for them, making sure that I could be there for them and be able to help them out as a special education teacher. I would ask that you please don't take them away because it will make it next to impossible for me to continue to stay here and help work for them.
Susan Rocco, CAC, Loke'elani Han. Susan Rocco, Special Education Advisory Council, also known as CAC. Susan, can you hear me?
Yes, Gina, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the Special Ed Advisory Council. My name is Susan Rocco, and I am staff to CAC, and I'm speaking for our Chair Martha Guinan and our Legislative Chair, Ivy Sinclair. We have submitted written testimony, and I will just try to point out a few things that have not been covered because it sounds like we're all speaking with the same voice. We believe that it is far more costly to reneg on the promise of pay differentials for special education teachers than to claim a temporary budget advantage. The reason is that we never talk about the costs of recruiting and retaining teachers, which can be substantial. In fact, there have been a number of studies that have shown that it can cost as much as twenty thousand dollars to separate a teacher, train a new one, and do all the recruitment and preparation to bring them in. And we heard from many people testifying that they will be forced to leave the special education positions just because the demand on their time to meet with kids and families and the paperwork is going to prevent them from being able to make a livelihood. So we feel that it's a terrible loss to lose teachers and that it's more cost-effective to maintain them. But the biggest loss is to our students. And in this time of great upheaval, to take away the stability of a teacher that and who knows their needs is unconscionable. So we hope that the board and the department will reconsider these pay differentials. Mahalo.
Loke'elani Han, kulakayapuni o kualapu'u. Loke'elani, can you hear me? Loke'elani is not connected. Chair Payne, this concludes oral testimony for this portion.
Mahalo, and thank you to all who have testified. We've also received written testimony, hundreds of different pieces of written testimony representing many voices on this issue. That is all publicly posted on the board's website. With public testimony on this item concluded, we will move on to the discussion. And we do need to have a motion before we begin discussion. So may I get a motion to direct Superintendent Kishimoto to rescind her February ninth, twenty-twenty-one memorandum to refrain from taking action on any teacher pay differentials without prior board approval? I see Board Member Cox's hand is up, so may I have the motion, please, from you?
I don't know if I can say all of that. I'm moved.
Say so moved, Maggie.
I'm so moved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Board Member Bakarsee?
Aloha, Board Member Bakarsee. I second the motion.
Thank you very much. Before we get into the discussion, I will give the superintendent a few minutes to share her perspective, and then we will reserve the bulk of the time for board members to discuss the motion. So Superintendent Kishimoto, just a few minutes, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Thank you, board members and members of the public for being part of this important conversation today. I agree with the kumu who spoke about kuliana. This state is feeling, to me, is kuliana, to fund public education adequately. Let me provide some context around the matter we're discussing today. In twenty nineteen, I asked the legislature to provide funds for a study on the adequacy of funding for education to determine if the department is receiving sufficient funding to effectively operate. This request went unfunded. The department contracted on its own a consulting firm that specializes in school finance and studies of public education systems in multiple states to conduct a study on teacher compensation. We funded the study internally, and it verified the situation we're all aware of and talking about today. We don't pay teachers sufficiently for the cost of living in Hawaii. Thus, their pay is not competitive. The study confirmed an area of need that we needed to address to effectively recruit and retain teachers. That teacher compensation is available, and it's dated January twentieth of twenty twenty. In the fall of twenty nineteen, we organized a press conference at Central Middle School where the governor, board chair, a complex area superintendent, HSTA, and I stood together to advocate for a teacher differential that we believe will prove that while salary is not the only matter that impacts retention, it is a key matter that will make a difference to retain certified teachers, particularly in hard-to-staffed areas. The board and governor approved of the concept, and we met with the legislature in early twenty twenty to push to have this permanently funded. We implemented the differentials in January twenty twenty and saw early outstanding results, particularly in special education, teacher retention, and teachers using the TATP process to return to special education from general ed. Unfortunately, the COVID pandemic hit, which was completely unexpected and changed the way we operate, introduced new funding needs, and altered the outlook of our state budget. In July twenty twenty, the department found itself in a budget crunch with little answers. We did not receive funding for the differentials, nor did we initially receive additional coronavirus relief funds, which would have been used to meet the demands for devices and connectivity for distance learning and PPE to ensure the safe return to our schools. I repeatedly asked our lawmakers for support as we navigated through the pandemic. In response to our request for approximately a hundred million dollars of relief fund, the legislature did reconsider and ended up passing an emergency bill for only six million dollars. The governor rejected this and provided the department with thirty-one million to fund our devices for our students. During the July twenty-third, twenty twenty general business meeting in light of the budget shortfall, I presented to the board a proposal to discontinue the differentials. There were many conversations about. There were many conversations about this with board chair, FIC chair, HR chair, in particular, as we look to work through committee agendas. The board opted to keep the differentials in place through the remainder of this year, regardless of the department's diminished budget. We didn't have money in our budget for the differentials. We've now paid out, and we still don't have the funding. I understand that, that that is the board's decision, and I'm glad that the board took this fiscal risk because, once again, we have demonstrated through the new data we have that the differentials continue to work, and the big winners are our students. I have continued to have discussions with legislators today to advocate for the funding for the differentials and continue to show them our impressive retention outcomes. Unfortunately, this has yet to be addressed. In October 2020, I notified the board and HSTA that the differentials remain unfunded beyond this year and that I would need to give my teachers the courtesy of notice. I was asked to wait until after the holidays to see if we have greater clarity of funding from the legislature. As of today, we have not received confirmation of funding for the differentials. Thus, to be fair to our teachers, I need to inform them that this remains unfunded. It is my job to notify my staff and the board of this development or lack of so that we are fiscally responsible in the budget that is approved. I believe this agenda item miscommunicates the real situation that we are facing. Our teachers need to be fairly compensated for the great work they are doing. I will keep advocating for my teachers, and most importantly, for our students across the state who deserve equitable access to great certified teachers. This challenge has to be addressed, and mediocrity is not an option. I implore you to work with me in making decisions about our public schools, our educators, and our students. We are currently struggling to maintain operations with a budget reduced by $100.2 million while addressing the new needs brought upon us by the worst health pandemic. The decision before the board is whether it can take the additional financial risk to obligate differentials for next school year when we have a deficit right now in current year expenses and a looming deficit for next school year. As superintendent, I cannot in good faith expend funds that we do not have. In fact, I legally cannot do this as well. This letter is important to my legal obligation on the Chapter 37-42 allotment as limited expenditures, liability for excessive expenditures. I ask the board to please review it. It states, "No department or establishment shall expend or be allowed to expend any sum or incur or be allowed to incur any obligation in excess of an allotment." It further states that "any officer," of which I am, "in a department who makes or causes to be made an excessive expenditure or incurs or causes to be incurred any excessive obligation shall be deemed guilty of neglect of official duty and shall be subject to removal from office and shall be liable to the state for such sum," and so forth. The agenda, I will continue to advocate for funding to have these differentials continue into next school year because this is good for students and allows us to retain our talented teachers. The agenda item before us should not be about rescinding my letter since I am fiscally and legally obligated to this board and the state. The question and agenda item should be whether, in light of the superintendent's notification, the board wants to set differentials as a priority funding area despite the fiscal risks and have the superintendent propose financial models to share the costs across all schools to continue this differential. I look forward to the conversation. I look forward to a cohesive move forward together because we are all on the same page that this should continue, and we are all on the same page that our teachers are highly valued, and we are all on the same page that equity of access for our students is not negotiable. Back to you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent. I now would like to open this up to board discussion. I will give you a chance to think through some of the comments that we heard from testifiers and from the superintendent, and then I will look for your hands. I see Kamana Bakarsee's hand is up, so go ahead, Kamana, Board, Board Member Bakarsee.
Mahalo, Chair Payne. The Board Member Kamana Bakarsee. First off, I would like to express my gratitude for the heartfelt testimonies that we've heard from, from each of these areas, but not just, not just the teachers that are directly affected by this, but the families, the students themselves, community members, and the, and even teachers that are not receiving the differentials that have seen the positive change that is undeniable in, in each of these schools. I really worry that, not, not just the message that this sends if we were to rescind this, but what are the effects? You know, we're saying that we need to concentrate our funds and our efforts on, on those that are most marginalized and most need. This simple measure that was started before COVID has proven that, that it's done so much good, and it's on that trajectory, trajectory to do more good. Now, if we take it away at this point in time, after so many people have adjusted their lifestyles to, to accommodate and put more into, into their profession, if we were to take that away now during this pandemic time, you know, I, I think the effects of that would be, would be very, very devastating. I, I believe that they wouldn't be able to easily revert back to the lifestyles that they had before, thus affecting how they work with our teachers, or work with our students. We're asking even more and more of them in this day and age, in this pandemic. So we, you know, we need to support them and empower them, not handicap them, by imposing additional burdens. You know, when we, we had tough discussions when these differentials were first put into place, and, and, you know, it, it was unsure where the funds would come from, but we, we knew that we had to find it, and we were given assurances that that would be looked through. Now, I, I do agree with Superintendent Kishimoto that we need to work together. But make no mistake, the, the response from the board was directly a response to the action you took. If this came to the table in a different way, and we started to have a discussion on how we can prioritize these differentials and how we can help you work together, then the response would have been much different. That's why we're here. That's where we're at today. So I fully intend to, to vote towards recommending that Superintendent Kishimoto rescind her memorandum and refrain from taking any actions. And I do know that, that will, that will necessitate us coming back to the table later to talk about other ways that we can support the DOE. But this, but, but this, this action that superintendent is, is, is trying to take, I, I don't think that is where we should be going. Kalamai, I yield the floor. Mahalo.
Thank you, Board Member Bakarsee. Does anyone else have something that they would like to say? One of the things that I heard from the superintendent was a possibility that we amend the motion, and I'll just put what I wrote down and out there for consideration, that we instead have a motion where we say that the board considers the differentials a priority and direct the superintendent to report back to us with a plan for making sure that the differentials are included in the, the budget for fiscal year 2022. Yes, Kamana, Board Member Bakarsee.
Mahalo, Chair Payne, Board Member Bakarsee. I, I do agree that that could be an amendment that is in addition to the direction to rescind the memo. If, if that is in addition to that, I would be open to, to that amendment as well. Mahalo.
Okay, we can continue the discussion, but I did hear we could just, an amendment would be to add that specific expectation in our board recommendation or our motion. Board Member Uimora, Board Vice Chair.
Yeah, Board Vice Chair Uimora. Thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to show my support to Board Member Kamana's response, and he's absolutely correct. The reason we're here is to address one item, and that is the, the issuance, rescinding the memo that Superintendent Kishimoto had sent out last week. And if, and if her, her request to work with the board, she worked with the board and board worked with her, this is not an example for recommend the board. So I think one of the things I would not do is to support an amendment that you stated, Chair Payne, but I do have another amendment that I would like to issue, but also remind the board that this is one topic. But on the agenda for this afternoon, there is how are we going to recommend the uses of the federal stimulus funds? So we can address that there, and I do have some ideas going forward in that, for that agenda item. But for me right now, Chair, I would like to, I'd like to amend the main motion to include the close of business on Friday, February 19, 2021, as a deadline for Superintendent Kishimoto to rescind her February 9, 2021 memorandum. And what this does is it puts a date as to when we want the action to be taken. So if you, if you want me to make amend the motion, I can do that or wait for discussion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm writing down your memo. Maybe you could say again what you said because I want to write it down. I think we should kind of keep the discussion going and hear from all the board members, and then we can go back to making the amendments and.
Okay, you want me to hold off to later?
Could you just say it again, though, so I could?
Yeah, okay. Move, move to amend the main motion to include the close of business on Friday, February 19, 2021, as a deadline for Superintendent Kishimoto to rescind her February 9, 2021 memorandum.
Okay. Okay, so we have that. So that's kind of part of our discussion right now. So let's keep that discussion going with Board Member Voss.
Thank you, Chair. I support the pay differential program. I believe it's an important program that should be funded. And want to add a little historical context here. When the board approved the pay differential in December 2019, we knew there was no dedicated funding for the 2021 school year. We hoped that the legislature would see the benefits of the program, but the legislature, in its discretion appropriate, had $0 this fiscal year because of the budget situation. With the benefit of hindsight, it was a mistake for the board to approve a program of this cost without first obtaining a commitment from the legislature to fund it. We had the best of intentions. We said that at the meeting at the time. But this was, and as of now, still is, an unfunded mandate. And we, as a board, need to accept responsibility for that. To me, this is a question of timing. If by May, the legislature, in fact, does not fund this program for the next biennium, and there's no specific dedicated source of funding for the next biennium, then the superintendent is right. We need to either rescind this program or we need to take the money from somewhere else. But for the life of me, I can't understand why this announcement needed to be made when it was and how it was. And that's the question I want to ask the superintendent. Why did you say this now and in the manner that you did?
Thank you, Board Member Voss, for the question. Back in October, November, we were having a conversation about when the announcement would be, when the, when the letter would need to go out to make sure that we are notifying teachers with sufficient time to be able to make decisions if the funding were not available. It was decided with the furloughs. And again, I didn't make this decision by myself. This was in conversation with board members. That we talked about the fact that the furloughs that the governor was still working through and the, in fact, that the, the holidays were upon us and teachers and others were going to be out on, on break. We needed to wait and see if we can get more information on a number of matters. We notified HSTA as well that this needed to go out at some point. After the holidays, now we're up against, we, we got more information on the federal relief funds, SO2, but we also are up against the TATP, TATP process, which is where teachers need to be empowered with the, the, the most information we can provide them about what jobs are available, what's funded, what's not funded, and in this case, whether or not they're going to have the differentials. That's why it was important. We, we have the latest as much as possible, but we're now up against that TATP process. We also know that we, we are accountable for these kind of notifications, and decisions have to be made based on it. And so we pushed it as far as we could, but we needed to make this, we needed to make this announcement so that teachers were informed.
Thank you, Superintendent. Chair, I'll, I'll be voting for the motions because I, I think that this notification was ill-timed. But I do want everyone on the board to understand that if the legislature does not fund this for the next biennium session, we are going to have to revisit this in May.
Thank you, Board Member Voss and the superintendent. Are there others on the board that would like to speak to this? I think it was alluded by Vice Chair Uimora that we may want to consider the federal funds that are coming in that were used, I believe, this year to help with the differential compensation. I think that that's something that's still unknown, but we do anticipate those resources coming in. And as we think about what our priorities are, we've already said that our priorities are the children who are most vulnerable, which include the children who are taught by these specific teachers, and of course, many others too, but particularly the ones that we have identified as high need areas for recruitment. I think what is also important from the testimony that I heard is the cost over the long run of having to continue to recruit and train teachers in these specific areas is, is high and perhaps higher than the differentials that we are paying. I'm still looking for hands and comments. We've heard from Vice Chair Uimora and Member Voss and Member Bakarsee. I now see Board Member Cox right ahead, and I see Board Member Fallon's hand. So Board Member Cox, you first.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'm not exactly sure which direction to go other than I believe that we have to fund this, period. So I'm not sure if rescinding the letter is, is legally the right thing to do. I, I'll leave that up to the attorneys to figure that out. But I do agree that what we need to do was, when you first talked about with the superintendent saying that we all need to be on the same page, saying we are going to pay for this one way or another. So I'm not exactly sure how to vote on this whole process, but it's very clear to me we need to pay these differentials, period. I yield.
Thank you, Board Member Cox. Board Member Fallon?
Thank you, Chair. Lynn Fallon, Board Member. I will be voting to rescind the memo. I, as a board member, was surprised when I saw the announcement. So I was not aware that it was the timing of it and that it was forthcoming. So going forward, I think the most prudent thing to do is to rescind the memo and to work as the superintendent is requesting with the superintendent to make some important policy decisions. I support this program. I wasn't with the board at the time, but in looking at the memo that was sent out, the data and the information clearly show a need, and the program shows success. And as other members have pointed out, we, we're just grappling with sustainable and recurring funding for this and what the options are. And I think that's. Uh, and what the options are. And I think that's where working with the superintendent will be very helpful. It is a large dollar amount, around 33 million, depending upon how you calculate the estimate. So that, that is, those are, uh, my considerations around, uh, rescinding the memo. I'm open to amendments as were suggested. I, I do have some very technical questions about this going forward, mainly because it will help in kind of the next steps around how we might, uh, decide on supporting the program going forward. Uh, so I don't know, um, Chair Payne, if I should wait until uh, our general board meeting or if you're open and okay with my asking questions now. They have to do with the current source of funding.
I think that it would be fine to bring those up if the answers are relevant to the particular motion that we're discussing, Board Member Fallon. So, um, go ahead and ask. We'll see.
Thank you Chair Payne. So, um, the, the money that was used to pay for the uh, differentials is unbudgeted or was unbudgeted per se. Where, did it come from EDN 100, 150 or other parts of the department? So that's my first question. And the second part of that is where are the other, where are other differentials? Funded and what, and what part of the department's budget?
Okay, I, I think, um, I will defer that question to Superintendent. Would you like to respond?
Thank you Board Chair. I have Brian Howlett here and he can speak to the, the current source of funding. These are again unpaid obligations. We're paying for them, but we're asking for the board in the next agenda in GBM to actually allocate SO2 funds so we can play, pay this obligation that we're paying out. Uh, and so it would be, it would be federal funds still pending the board's, uh, approval. Uh, and then I'm gonna, can, Brian, are you able to jump on please?
Hi, this is Brian. Good afternoon. Um, so currently Superintendent is correct, we are paying for those teacher positions in the programs for which they're, uh, established, which is an EDN 100, but we are expending money out of EDN 100 at a rate that we cannot sustain, which is why we have the proposal in a later, uh, meeting agenda to consider using ESSER funds to meet that for this current fiscal year. For the approximately $6 million of differentials for other types of positions that we have spread out throughout the department, those programs, uh, like teachers, uh, are being paid for out of the programs in which those positions are established. One of the, uh, much smaller amounts spread out through various programs and these programs have high rates of vacancies and that's in large part how, how it's funded is we have these differentials because of high rates of vacancies in these position types and that's, it's, it's sort of a self-funding initiative. I, I don't think with a $30 million program or differential that, that we have the same sort of discretion or flexibility to rely on, on vacancies really, especially when this program has proven to be so successful.
So, thank you. So when the budget cuts were made, uh, in 2020 for this year of 100 million, that is what impacted the, the ability to fund with unbudgeted dollars through those program IDs.
That, that certainly put further constraints on our ability to fund from, from within. I, I think the conversations on this topic have always been that for this current fiscal year, we did not have a means to pay. And we were directed or encouraged to go back and, and look. But for the first half of the year, you know, the first half year that it was implemented, um, at that point in time, we, we did have a plan on how to fund it and we, and we did. This current year, uh, not, not, not the same case. We're not working with the same budget this year as we did last.
Okay, and so, uh, the reason I'm asking this questions is kind of going forward and looking at sustainability of this. So it, because it becomes a recurring cost, I, I, I was just trying to understand where the money was coming from, the unbudgeted money and then the impact of the cuts. Thank you very much. I yield.
Hey, Vice Chair Uimura, go ahead.
Uh, thank you Chair Payne. Vice Chair Uimura, I just, since, since it was brought up and this question is to Brian, CFO Brian Howlett, that the, uh, the unfunded was total about 95 million, but I want to, uh, address a comment that was made at the House Finance Committee hearing with the Vice Chair at that time and mentioned 100.2 million. And also mentioned that it was an offset to allowing the department to keep, uh, apparel savings, which you know happens every year. So the question to you Brian, is that a true statement? Because, uh, it was made. And secondly, I do know that we do have payroll savings because of the timing of when positions are filled and when people leave and things of that sort. So, uh, it's a two-part question. Is that statement correct? And secondly, if it is correct, how much of the payroll savings was used to offset some of your unfunded, uh, liabilities?
Well, that's, that, that's an incredibly complicated answer to, to give. Um, I, I, I have to assume I understand what, what the asker of the question was, was asking and, and, and the context that he was referring to, the Vice Chair, was that last session, they were considering taking vacancy cuts from the department, individual vacant positions. Uh, we offered the $100 billion package, which included, uh, assumed reductions in turnover savings, which are the equivalent of vacancy reductions. Um, and we asked, please don't take the actual positions, just take this generic $10 million cut to our salary budget. So, um, that, that's what they, that's what they did. Something I tried to explain in, in that hearing was also that we have over $40 million of turnover savings baked into our budget. We already have a very high level of assumed, assumed vacancy in our budget and that $100 million cut increased it by, by $10 million. So uh, I, I, I don't know if that helps clarify, uh, but it's, it's certainly something that, that, that needs further attention and for people to pay attention and understand what it is and how our budget is built because we, we keep coming back to the same areas of confusion about trying to rely on vacancies to fund. And there, there are limits to that and, and, you know, we've, we've explained over the last few years, in particular in the, in the development of the biennial budget that we're currently in, we, we also took action to repurpose salary money. I believe it was in the neighborhood of $20 million. So the, the statement I made earlier about we're not operating with the same budget this year that we have in previous years, it's, I, I stand behind that and, and there, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Yeah, and, and I thank you Brian. And I just wanted to, uh, because it was brought up, I just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to, uh, sort of clarify that. You know, basically, you know, because I, that was a question and I'm not sure if you went back to them and clarified it, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that the board understands that going forward, like you said, we're working on a different budget. But I, I'm not really sure, and I'm still not sure if that 32.5 million was covered. So therefore it's not really an unfunded total amount, if you know what I'm saying, but this is not what this meeting is about. So I'm gonna stop my conversations here and wait to the agenda item in, in the GBM meeting this afternoon, if that's okay. So thank you Chair. I yield for it.
Thank you Vice Chair Uimura. Are there any other board members who would like to speak to the motion? Uh, Board Member Namau?
Hello Chair Payne. Um, Board Member Namau here. I just want to make a couple of comments here and there as I'm listening to my other colleagues. Mahalo nui kikahi nona kumu apao mai kikula kaiupuni ma popo, um, vau ya oko apao and kakao vau ya oko. I just want to say that, um, I understand the legal and fiscal obligation of the superintendent. However, I just feel that a lot of us were taken aback by the memo that was produced. And I can only imagine how that memo affected the people that are getting these differentials. It's heartbreaking to read all these testimonies and what the conditions that people are living under. And I'm, I just don't understand the timing of this memo. I mean, she, there was an explanation given, but considering that other things are coming down the pipeline through federal government, um, I'm, I'm hanging on for that faith and hope. And, um, I understand that, you know, there's that TATP process and you wanted to give the consideration to these teachers so that they could make better choices. However, I think it just created a lot more stress for these families and a lot of uncertainties. And it, just the way things have been handled and I'm, I'm not very, um, I'm not very happy, happy about how things have, have come on down. And, you know, we can see that these differentials have made a tremendous impact. And I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine what the lives of these teachers would be without this differential and what they've had to endure this past year. I believe that these differentials was just one more thing that they could hang on to in what they've had to go through this past year and through this pandemic. With everything that they've had to do, especially for the sped teachers who've had to risk their lives in the classroom and having to teach these children face to face in the classrooms. So the differentials, I think, made a tremendous, a tremendous difference for these people to hang on to their positions, to come back and become sped teachers and to be there for these students as well as our kaipuni kumu as well as, um, our geographic exceptions as well. Um, so I'm sorry, I've lost track of some of my thoughts here. I just wanted to say that we know that the differentials are working and it's very important that we have received all this testimony. And I, I'm hoping that there are many legislators out there or legislative staffs that are listening into our Board of Education meetings. They, they, they say that they've been listening into our conversations here. And I hope that they realize and recognize that yes, this was a bold move that we took last year. And yes, and to, um, to, to, uh, to, uh, Board Member Voss, that maybe in hindsight, we shouldn't have gone down that road, but we did. We took that risk. We did and we needed to take that bold move and it, and it paid off. It's paid off. And I'm hoping that our legislators can recognize this and I hope the public can recognize this. That we need to continue the differentials. We need to support our teachers in this way. And we need to ask our legislators to please to make these considerations that this is working. This is really working. And so please try to find the funds available to continue the differentials and the pay. I'd appreciate that. Mahalo.
Mahalo Board Member Namau. Any other comments from other board members, uh, Board Superintendent Kishimoto, if you'd like to respond to that, go right ahead.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Namau. Um, I, I want to clarify that the that in October 23rd, I notified the board that the compensation was going to cease at the end of this year, barring either it's incorporation into new collective bargaining agreement or funding from the legislature. There were, we've been talking about this and on December 3rd, I presented to the board a budget that the board passed for next two years that does not include the differentials. The, I've been talking about this. The board has not at any point asked me to come back and adjust that budget. So it's not a surprise. The board has been formally informed by me with proposals and has passed the budget. Again, if the board wants to take different action at this time, then I will respond and adjust to those actions. But my letter is at the end of all of those conversations. So it's not, it's not a surprise letter. And it's also a letter that again comes with notification to the bargaining unit and, and it comes with notification and conversation, even with the governor who said there, there's no money for this. He's not putting, you know, he doesn't have a way to fund this. The legislature has said they have no way to fund. So it's coming at the end of that, but it also had to happen before TATP. Again, if the board wants me or wanted me to take different action, I have not been told by the board that you wanted me to. We still have time to take different action because we are within the legislative process and the final budget hasn't, uh, been passed by the legislature and we're still in conversation. And we can still go to the legislature and say, look, we've heard from our critical constituents here, students and teachers, that this is necessary and we can continue to push for this in, in the budget. But I've done the notification I have to do. I, I do think that if the board is going to tell me to rescind this letter, that I'm going to ask that we go seek legal counsel, whether the board can obligate me to rescind the letter that meets a statutory requirement that I have of responsibility and that is part of an ongoing budget development process that we've been engaging in together. I am only going to implement as the board's will based on your priorities for our budget. And I've been responsive to and have made adjustments based on what the board's will is. Uh, so I just want to raise that because I keep hearing that this was a surprise. No, I don't run my letters by the board necessarily, but I have very explicitly notified the board that this was forthcoming and have even put it into the budget on December 3rd, which had no allocation for differentials. Thank you Board Chair.
Thank you Superintendent Kishimoto. Uh, Vice Chair Uimura, go ahead.
Uh, thank you Chair Payne. I just want to give some clarification since I was the Chair back in December when we were reviewing the budget. So Superintendent, what, what you're telling the board right now is that you did not include the, um, the differentials in your biennial budget. And that when you included the unfunded amount, the intention was to tell the board that it was not included because I remember discussions talking about that and talking about the budget and, uh, pointing that out is that in addition, we have a shortfall of about $95 million that's in the budget that we have to fund. But, uh, and maybe you or CFO Howlett can correct me, but as we look at the biennial budget, it doesn't change from the base budget. So the assumption is it's in the budget of what you're saying now. To clarify to the board, it was never in the budget. And I find that very hard to believe. And secondly, in, in previous meetings, you had told the board that yes, that, you know, uh, you don't have the funding, but, uh, I'm sorry. Part of the funding for the differentials would come from one area. One of several areas is federal funding, right? So now we have federal funding. So that's an area of a source of funding that we can use to fund the differentials. So, you know, I, I'm kind of confused as what you're trying to tell us. On one hand, you're saying, well, uh, I think I need to look, you know, get some legal counsel on this. Are you intending to sue the board for our actions? Is that your intention? Are you saying basically that the differences was never in the budget, which, which is a surprise to me? And it is not in the budget going forward. So if you want to respond to that, I appreciate it, but I just need more clarification because that's not my understanding.
Yeah, I, I don't think that I've ever been in, uh, had any, uh, been in the habit or have the reputation for threatening the board with any been in the habit or have the reputation for threatening the Board with any kind of legal action. And I, I don't appreciate that being stated in a public setting like this that makes it seem as if that's what this conversation is. I am asking for the Board to give me direction on where you want me to go next with the budget and to focus less on the letter and more on where you want me to go. Because I need direction, and you've been giving me direction along, and I've been very responsive to that. What I'm saying is, is it necessary to rescind the letter? Or does that letter meet the obligation that says on the chapter 3742 that, that we can't overexpend? And so it provides documentation that we've taken the efforts not to overextend. We understand that, and we've made notifications, but there's been discussions and a documentation of the decisions based on that. That, that's what I'm raising. No one is threatening anyone on anything. And again, I, I don't want words put into my mouth when I have been working in good faith with the Board of through this very difficult budget situation we have, focus on what's best for kids and how we protect the human resource infrastructure and not lose our talent. That's my focus.
So, so I apologize if I, you know, read you wrong, but that's what I read from what you were telling me. But you still haven't answered the other two questions that I posed to you.
I'm going to have Brian Hallett talk through the financial questions that you, you asked us, well, Board Member Uimura.
Okay.
I, I apologize, Chair Uimura. Just, just to be clear, could, could you restate the question?
Yeah, there was, there was two things, because the Superintendent had mentioned that the differentials were never, was not, not in the budget. And there, and when she presented the budget, she was never questioned on it as far as whether it was going to be in the budget or not. And my comment was, when we were discussing the budget, and I specifically mentioned that the $95 million, I remember talking to you, Brian, on the underfunded amounts that was in the fiscal year 2021 numbers, right? And the biennial budget goes forward from there. So it's like your base budget. And so the question was, is it in the budget or not? Because when I look at the carryforward amounts in your base budget, which was a 621 numbers, there was no change to those numbers. So the assumption I made in the meeting and afterwards was, it's in the budget. It's in the biennial budget.
Right.
So the question is, are you going to fund it?
Thank you. Let me apologize if, if we weren't clear on December 3rd when we came to the Board with, with our package of materials. I, I believe in that package, the $95 million referring to is the current year shortfalls.
Yes.
This fiscal year, not, not the biennial, that, that next year that we're, we're kind of talking about today. But, but in that $95 million, what we were indicating is that we had a shortfall, unmet shortfall, unfunded expense for differentials. And, and that we would, at that time, we believed we would be relying on an emergency appropriation request through the Governor. Not, not to confuse matters, but, but since, you know, that initial back December conversation over the course of January with, with different actions, that emergency appropriation request through the Governor had never materialized. But at that point in time, we were trying to communicate that we are counting on help from outside of our budget to meet that expense for this year. But there was no adjustment to the base budget for years 22 and 23. And so that's, that's the problem, is that we don't have dedicated budget for this large expense.
Yeah, so, so, because the, the deal is not on a cash basis, correct? So, so when you paid out the $32.5 million, you expensed it. So it's in your 621 numbers, correct? I mean, you just don't put it aside as if we're not going to recognize those, the $32.5 million. It's in your 621 base numbers, which you then leap off of that to, to do your biennial budget, correct?
I, I, I'm not sure what the 621 number is, is referring to.
Your, your fiscal year, your fiscal year 2021 numbers, right? And the $32.5 million is, was paid out, as you stated. So because you guys not on the cash, but you, you know, doesn't matter because you paid it off. The expense is recorded in your books as a June 2021, correct?
A little confused. I mean, we, the expenses being incurred with every pay, passing pay period as we pay these differentials out to, to employees. What I've been trying to say is that we are incurring expenses at a rate we cannot afford, it cannot sustain. We've been able to do that to date because we are banking on or hoping for some sort of bailout before the end of the fiscal year. If that does not happen, we will be ending the year in a deficit. And that is in part, you know, I, I think I'm just foreshadowing what, what we're going to be talking about in a, in a future meeting with use of federal funds for this fiscal year.
Yeah. And no, I understand that, but my question to you is where are you recording those payouts?
Those payouts are hitting our general fund budget or where those teachers are established, whether they're in EDN 100 or EDN 50 general funds. And what we're going to need to do before the end of the year is, is essentially shift some of those charges to another source, because what the budget we have is not sufficient to sustain that, that expense.
Okay, so, so my question, and I don't, I don't want to take up the Board's time because it's really a numbers thing to talk about, but. So I just want to make sure, because, did you adjust then your six, six fiscal years on June 2021 numbers? Because that's the, to me, that's your base numbers in which you base your biennial budget off of. So if you did not adjust those numbers, the $32.5 million is included in there, whether you fund it or not.
I'm, I'm very confused about the 621. I don't know if you're talking budget or expenditures. But we are incurring the expense. We do not have the budget to meet that.
Yeah, so, so you're at show numbers.
To account for the expense in our future general.
Okay, so, yeah, so you answered my question, Brian. Basically, it's in your, it's in your biennial budget going forward.
Well, I'm, I'm saying it's, it's not. We, we did not set aside $32 million in our general fund budget in fiscal years 22 and 23. All we came forth on December 3rd through the Board were, were cuts. Because those were the instructions we were informed to, to work with. Worked with from our budget and finance instructions.
Okay, why don't we take this offline? Because I, I don't think the other members are interested in the numbers we're talking about. So we can take this offline, Brian? And I can show you exactly what, what we're talking about. So Chair Payne, sorry for the diversion there.
No, that, that's all right. I, I have been reviewing the Board briefs, and the Superintendent is correct that we did have a Board brief on October 23rd where the last statement was that the compensation would cease barring its incorporation in the new collective bargaining agreement or funding from the legislature. I think that for most of us, we still went with that assumption that there would be funding for this in our, in the budget that was going forward. I.
If I may, Chair, I think I brought up the federal funding, and I think the reason why the Board has taken that viewpoint is because federal funding has, was mentioned as a source of funding the differentials.
Yes.
So when federal funding came in twice now, that's what the Board is looking at.
I, I agree with you on that, and I think that's where we're looking for some relief here, and that, what didn't occur was any real public discussion on this. That was just in a Board brief that we receive usually weekly from the Superintendent. So I do want to acknowledge that she did put that into her Board brief, but we have not had any public discussion. And subsequent to that, we have moved forward with that assumption. I think that Vice Chair Uimura was putting forth that this was still in the budget. Of course, waiting for the legislature to deal with, because we do know that Governor puts forth a budget, and we put forth a budget, and then the legislature does what they will. So that's still being discussed. I do think that, from what I'm hearing from Board members, is that we still are identifying this as a priority. And it is a priority that is more than just paying teachers extra. It is a priority that affects the success of our most needy children, which actually accounts for about half of our enrollment now. So I think that there, we did have some consideration as we were talking about this to perhaps amend the motion, and that's still sort of out there if we want to do that, to identify this as our priority and then direct the Superintendent to work with us to figure out how that can happen. And that's still open for discussion. I see Board Vice Chair Uimura's hand up, so I will yield to him.
Chair Payne, yes, I just wanted to restate my original amendment. I think you, you took notes on that, is to really, basically just to put a date on it as far as when the rescinding amendment should, the deadline for that.
Okay, I, I have that.
Okay.
So, and is there anyone else? So is, do you want to make that as an official amendment to the?
Yes. If you want me, I can, I can move to amend the motion if you want me to.
Okay, let me see if I need to get help from the staff to write that up for us so that we have the amended motion, unless it's as simple as just putting a, a due date.
Yeah, if you like, Chair, I can, I can read what the amended motion would look like in total.
Okay, just tell me if this is what you're saying.
Okay.
I recommend the Board direct, this is my motion. I recommend the Board direct Superintendent Kishimoto to rescind her February 9th, 2021 memorandum by the close of business on Friday. Okay, the, the staff has your amendment too, so I'm going to let them do it. But, but you're adding in there to re, and to refrain from taking action. Do we want to add anything in there about working with us to address where the funds will be coming from?
The reason I, I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, because, you know, we're going to talk about that in the next agenda. So, and I'm in a general business agenda on the use of the federal funds.
Okay.
It kind of ties in, ties in real nicely, because then we can get the Superintendent's recommendations and her comments on that, in that format, yeah.
So we will need to take a, a vote on the amendment, which is to add after 2021 memorandum, by close of business on Friday, and that's the 19th of February?
Correct.
And then we just would continue with the remaining language and to, taking action on any pay differentials without prior Board approval?
That's correct.
All right, so I'm pretty sure that we need to just vote on the amendment to the motion, and then we need to go back and vote on the motion. Is that, is that right, people who are holding the books on Roberts rules? Sorry. Correct, they say. All right, all right. So first, we need to have a second to the amendment that you made. So may I have a second? Board Member Bakarsee?
Board Member Bakarsee, a second to amendment.
Okay, now we're going to take a, hang on just a minute. Okay, so now we're going to take a vote on the amendment to the motion, and then we have to go back and take a vote on the full motion, okay? So I'm going to call your names. And the first is, voting on the amendment, Vice Chairperson Uimura.
Hi.
Board Member Asher. Board Member Asher. Okay, I'm going to have, no vote there. Board Member Bakarsee.
Hi.
Board Member Cox.
Hi.
Board Member Fallon.
Hi.
Board Member Namau.
Hi.
Board Member Tekeno.
Hi.
Board Member Voss.
Hi.
Okay, this motion has passed. Now we need to go back and vote on the full motion, which reads, I, I recommend that the Board direct, the, the, the motion is that the Board will direct the Superintendent to rescind her February 9th, 2021 memorandum by Friday, February 19th, close of business, and to refrain from taking action on any teacher pay differential without prior Board approval. And with that, I will now call the role again. Board Member Uimura.
Hi.
Board Member Bakarsee.
Hi.
Board Member Cox.
Hi.
Board Member Fallon.
Hi.
Board Member Namau.
Hi.
Board Member Tekeno.
Hi.
And Board Member Voss.
Hi.
Okay, the motion has been approved. We're not done yet, though, because we are now, if there is any late testimony from the public, I need to know from the staff before I read through all of this. Do we have any late testifiers, Board staff?
Yes, Board Chair.
Okay, could you tell me how many, so I know how much time to give them?
Three, Board Chair.
All right, so we will go, continue with our two-minute limit and make sure if you are testifying that you have signed up with the same name that you registered with. Test your speakers, because if we can't hear you, we will not be able to include your testimony. So, go ahead, Board staff, and allow the testifiers to speak.
Rebecca Hadley Schlosser. Davlin Lokelani Han. Lokelani Han. Rebecca Hadley Schlosser, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Please proceed. Rebecca?
Good afternoon, Chairman Kane and members of the Board of Education. I'm Rebecca Hadley Schlosser, and I'm a special education teacher at Nani Kipono Elementary School on the Waimea Coast. I've been a teacher in Hawaii for 24 of my 29 years as an educator. 23 of these years I have spent on the Waimea Coast. I've committed to this community and have questioned what incentives were being provided for those of us who've remained committed to serving students with special needs. We've had incentives provided for those who left the classroom to come back into the classroom. We also have the incentives for national board certification, but up until this year, we had nothing for those of us who have stayed in special education. Imagine how I felt disrespected and devalued when I saw that the Superintendent was going to discontinue the shortage differentials as a way to address budget cuts. I'm one of the teachers who went back into the classroom this year, and I'm teaching first and second graders with special needs. To have the shortage differentials discontinued is a tremendous pay cut for me to the tune of $18,000 of lost salary, or about $1,500 per month. When I figured it out, if I add in the, the pay cuts as well, I'm losing close to three or four months' salary. To see that Superintendent Kishimoto does not honor or respect her teachers who've been working extremely hard this year is very disheartening. I strongly urge you to reconsider this and keep the differentials in place as promised. I've seen the attrition rate of special education teachers over my 23 years on the coast. The attrition ratio, attrition ratio was turned around this year when we have 43% of our teachers coming back into special education. It's doing what we wanted. To have this removed, we're going to be in another Felix consent decree. I was here in 97 when we went through the consent decree. It was hard on us. This has been the hardest year we've ever had.
Davilin Loke Lani Han. Followed by. Loke Lani Han. Davilin Loke Lani Han Kulakayapuni o Ko Koalapu. Davilin, can you hear me? Davilin Loke Lani Han Kulakayapuni o Koalapu. Davilin Loke Lani Han. Is not connected. Loke Lani Han. Can you hear me? Loke Lani? Board Chair Loke Lani Han is not connected, this concludes oral testimony for this meeting.
Thank you. And since there is no more public testimony or further business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. As of twelve fifty one, we will convene our general business meeting at one thirty, thank you.